Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for checking in this evening. We're very happy to have this online version for you and hope that you find this method to be positive for you. I just wanted to cover a few things. First, I'm Esther Mongan. I am the superintendent for Central District 301. Alongside me, I have a few other panelists that I may call on throughout the course of the presentation. I have Shane Berkmeier, who is our director of curriculum, who will be answering some questions specifically for us in the elementary realm. Stephen Books unfortunately was unable to attend tonight. He is also a director of curriculum for high school and post-secondary, but he is out ill today. I also have Tammy Shamo, who is working for PMA, who is our agency with whom we work with relevant to financial analytics. She helps us with some of the bond debt information that we have in case you have questions regarding that. Dana Flug, who is our business manager as well, as well as some other cabinet team members in the event trying to run through some of the questions. So a little different than what we did face-to-face. You should have at the bottom of your panel in the Zoom control panel a place to actually enter in questions or type in your questions. My team will be monitoring those questions and will try to get to as many of those as we can throughout this evening's presentation so that we can address them. If we're unable to get to them, we will try to respond to them in some kind of format to you after the fact. Or you may be able to find answers on our referendum website underneath the myths and facts. When we do get to the end of the presentation, there should be time for several questions that would be posed that our team will be making sure they ask me so that I know what's out there. Only the host and the panelists will see the questions just so that you're aware of that. And so as we start to see them come through, we'll respond to those. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and get going on the presentation. And again, thank you so much for checking in. The first thing I just want to talk a little bit about is what we do at Central 301 and why we believe it's important that we make sure our students are college and career ready. One of the things we're very proud of as a district is that we work very hard and diligently to ensure that our students, even in kindergarten through 12th grade, all of them are really getting ready to be successful for college and careers. And that seems a little silly maybe to some parents, but actually it's about finding those skill sets that are important for them to be able to have those necessary skills, whether it be grit or perseverance, being able to stick with certain projects, teamwork, collaboration, learning to work with their own peers is a really important skills as our kids are younger and process through inside of our education system. And so that's a really important piece for us as a district. The other thing that we're really proud of is that we were able to actually stay open during COVID. We were one of the only school districts in the state of Illinois who actually kept our doors open during the pandemic. We were able to bring our kids in half-days and rotate through them. And even prior to that, when we closed in March as an entire nation, we were pleased that we had already put forth one-to-one computing, where we had had a learning management system canvas that our teachers had learned, as well as our students had already received one-to-one devices. So we were able to really jumpstart very quickly into that pandemic world, which we're very thankful for. Other districts had to do some training and try to get up to speed with where we had been. So we were proud of that. And one of the other things we noted was that we were actually a little behind in what we felt would be a good STEAM education for our students. And so this year, one of the implementations that we have done across our K-5 group is to really have major strides inside of our STEAM education, both the science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, to make sure that our students are able to parlay what they received in the one-to-one initiative that we had going and really trying to go deeper into some of those activities. I'm going to turn this over to Shane Berkmeier, our director of curriculum, to just kind of talk a little bit more about that initiative.
Thanks, Esther. So yes, we are in year one of implementation of STEAM. And again, as Esther had mentioned, this is directly tied into that science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, as well as bringing in some of our ELA components. What we are doing with this new STEAM curriculum that we're rolling out, it's directly tied to our core curriculum in science and social studies and mathematics. And we're building upon that. Like she had mentioned, we're building specific components to that grit, that perseverance, that problem-solving, those types of skills as they're developing those engineering projects and dealing with the robotics and the coding. Those are the components that we're moving forward as we're implementing in year one. Alongside to support our classroom teachers as they're implementing this, we have a team of instructional coaches. We have a team of nine across the district, four of which really hone in on our elementary education. They have been alongside our teachers to support them in developing those activities by tuning some of those components, supporting the implementation as that's rolling out. Again, this is year one. We'll continue to expand that program as we continue to move forward. But we're off to a great start with that.
Thank you, Shane. The other thing I think as a district we're really proud of is the way that we're able to maintain our facilities. As many of you are well aware, we do have a building that's 106 years old. With 106 years, it still is functioning well. It's doing a great job educating our students and the parents and staff and students who attend Lily Lake really do appreciate that building and love the feel of that building as we're servicing it. The other district school that we have is we have Central Middle School, which has been with us for over 68 years. And as you may be aware, as other districts last spring had put forth referendums to actually replace 40-year-old buildings, you could see we're doing a very good job of maintaining older buildings, maintaining them in a way that functions very well by having both of these buildings and making sure that our facilities are maintained in a way that we believe is very, very good for our students and for our staff. The challenge we have as a district and one of the biggest challenges we have is really the low commercial EAV that we have within our district. One of our... We understand that basically the tax base is really on your backs and we appreciate that. And we want you to know that we totally do understand that really the dollars that we're asking for instead of any referendum or for the educational system is really on the backs of our taxpayers. We recognize that by just looking at the graph you see here, where you can see we know that we're forced to rely on you because we have very little in terms of our commercial EAV. And you can see here Central right here at about, you know, $38 million in comparison to Keanlyn, who is actually a little smaller than us, but they have almost twice as much, not quite, but almost twice as much in terms of commercial EAV inside of their district to help absorb some of those tax rates. And so having that lowest commercial EAV definitely is a challenge for us and something that we're very, very aware of. But we also understand that that's why it's crucial that we're always fiscally responsible in everything that we do to make sure that we're managing your tax dollars in the best way that we possibly can. We've also been steadily growing for decades. We talk about the enrollment growth that we have. These numbers have actually come from the source. One is the frontline analytics, which actually comes out of the score report card as well. And then ISB's is the red. They're just targeted at different times. The largest number, which is 4,931, is as of September of 2023 this school year. So you can see our continuous growth as we continue to look at enrollment numbers that are coming in across Central 301. The one statistic that's very interesting is that since 2016, we welcome more than 1,000 students. And when you think about 1,000 students, that actually equates to more than one of our buildings that we currently have in existence. And so we have yet to add another building since 2016, but you can see we've taken in at least equivalency of what that building might require. So the remarkable growth that we're experiencing obviously poses a lot of challenges to our infrastructures, trying to determine how do we manage this growth? How do we help in terms of trying to absorb this growth? And what's a plan, a comprehensive plan, that can help us as a district, help us move ourselves forward and into the future and be prepared for the continued growth that is coming out toward the Western expansion? As you can see here, we have... All of our multi-grade level schools are operating at full capacity, which necessitate us having to get mobile units at all four of our elementary buildings. Currently, three of our elementary buildings have four classrooms that are stationed inside their facilities. And Lily Lake has two classrooms, as well as we have a mobile unit at the high school. Part of our challenge is obviously the additional cost that adds to infrastructure, but it also creates some traveling challenges for our students. Unfortunately, this year with the very cold weather, we had some sewage pipes that froze. And so there's other infrastructure problems that we met this year as we continue to work through some of these challenges. Operational capacity by school, we can talk about in terms of where we're sitting in each classroom. When we talk about operational capacity, what I'm really speaking about is a general education classroom. We have many classrooms inside schools, but sometimes those classrooms don't seat a full classroom worth of students. For example, some of our special education classrooms might be smaller. They're about 2/3 the size of a normal classroom, which is generally around 900 square feet, which could hold generally about 30 kids. The challenge with capacity inside schools and those questions regarding enrollment and capacity is that in some cases depends on, at the high school level, if there's choice, which we do have a lot of choice for students. When you give them choices, we may not run classes always at full capacity at 30. You may have students that are running in a different classroom. We try to run most of our core classrooms, English, math, social science, as close to those as we can. But if there is choices of other type courses that some kids connect with, special education students, those classes may be a little bit smaller. Same thing at the middle school level. It's a little easier to keep those capacity numbers at the elementary school level. You can note in this chart at the bottom, it does not include specialized spaces. So when we're talking about physical education spaces at the middle school and high school, we're talking about career tech education spaces because you really can't teach in those kinds of spaces. We're talking about fine arts spaces. Those would be like art rooms and those types of specialized programs, music classrooms, where again, you're really not putting classroom desks in there so you can't really teach in those. And then the special education, which are much smaller. The light blue represents by building, if we took the mobiles away, where would we be at capacity in terms of those buildings? Could we fit all of our kids inside that building without mobiles? And the darker blue represents where we're at with mobiles. And so you can see for each of the buildings, Country Trails, we're at 109% if we remove the mobiles. With the mobiles, we're at 97%. At Harvey Thomas, we're at 106% if we took those mobiles away. And we're at 95% with our mobiles. Lily Lake, we're at 106% if we took the mobiles away. And we're at 94% with the mobiles. Prairie View, again, 109% without the mobiles and 97% with mobiles. Both Central Middle School and Prairie Knowles Middle School have some space. Central Middle School currently has one grade level in it, eighth grade, plus a Mid Valley program. That's why it's sitting at 79%. It's not large enough yet at this time to be able to put two grade levels in there unless we put mobile units there. So it is only large enough to house one of our grade levels and that's why we simply have eighth grade there. And Prairie Knowles Middle School has sixth and seventh grade. So you can see at 93%, we cannot put eighth grade over there. It cannot house another grade band and we're almost at capacity with sixth and seventh grade. We could restructure some of the classrooms on the hallways to see if we could open them up, maybe remove some walls to gain some space there. But otherwise, that's pretty limited in space. And Central High School without mobiles, what, 102% if we remove that mobile? And with the mobile, we're at 98%. We keep hearing why a high school. It's really not about a high school. It's about a one comprehensive plan, a plan that can actually alleviate the enrollment challenges at all levels. It can alleviate the challenges at the elementary, at the middle school, and at the high school. So it really provides us an opportunity to provide space for all levels so that we have room to continue to grow. What we don't want to do is have to keep coming back to our taxpayers five years from now, six years from now, and say we need more money. We're trying to get a comprehensive plan that can take us out the furthest, knowing that we do have approved subdivisions. When they break ground, we're not sure. We do know they've been approved, so they're sitting out there. We also still are getting additional new students every single day. And so are continuing to grow at rates that of course are creating major problems for our infrastructure. Space limitations also create some major problems for us in terms of the demand that we need for career and tech education and expanding some of those academic resources. Some of the current challenges that we hear from our parents at this time, even our students, is giving them a breadth of opportunities in the career and technical education world, some hands-on type programming. We do have a regional program where we bring kids in for our veterinary science program. We send kids out for welding and for some manufacturing programs and auto programs. We also work with Fox Valley. Those programs do require our students to leave our building and actually have to reduce their sections that they can take in terms of schooling because they have to travel to and from those buildings. So we are looking at how do we incorporate and improve some of the opportunities we have within our own district. Having the opportunity to construct a new high school does provide those lab spaces that we might need in order to be able to provide other opportunities, whether it be woodworking, welding, some of the manufacturing type programs, trying to meet the needs of our growing population. One of the things we do in career tech ed, and it's mandated by the state of Illinois, is we do ask our students for their interests. We do an interest survey so we have an idea of where our students are sitting. And we want to make sure that we have flexible spaces and labs for career tech ed that we can actually provide choices for our students, but also be able to pivot as the world changes. We know that even five, 10 years from now, the world could look different and making sure we have flexible spaces that we can adjust to as we continue to move, but also have programs that are very, very beneficial for our students. One of the top programs right now our students are asking for is a biomedical of some type, some kind of medical background. We do not currently have that. It's something we're definitely trying to look at. The challenge in our current infrastructures, we just don't have the lab space or the space to put in classrooms that are a lab-based program. In the picture here, you can see the top one is actually our veterinary assistance program. You can see the lab is fairly large. It's with animals so they can learn how to take care of animals. And the one on the bottom is our incubator program, which is a flagship program for our business students where they actually look to develop their own products, working with a lot of our community members to come up with products and to take it back out onto the market to see if they can put it out there for sale. But career tech education is a huge shift from career tech education, I'm sorry, from the Illinois State Board of Education and something that our community members continue to ask us to try to find ways for our students to be more engaged and to have more online... Or on... In... I'm sorry, on-hand learning within our programs. And so that's one of the things that we're looking to try to expand as we move forward. The other challenge we currently have with our high school is we are currently using four lunches because of the size of our high school. We have the National Lunch Program that we belong to. As part of the National Lunch Program, we have to serve lunches between the hours of 10:00 and 2:00. If you look at the current bell schedule for lunch schedule, you can see we service from 9:46 to 12:58. And you might say, well, you don't really have to go that early. You could go in the afternoon, allotting about 20 minutes in between to clean up all the tables and those types of things would put us close to 12:30. I'm sorry, would put us close to 1:30 and then kids finishing eating lunch at 2:00. That's really close to the end of their school day and we do not think that was the best for our students to have to go all day without food. And so we did ask for a waiver from the State Board of Education to allot our students the opportunity to actually have lunch at 9:47 a.m. The State Board did give us the approval for the waiver. So our first lunch begins at 9:46 or quarter to 10 for our students to eat that lunch. And then we finish up at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Having a facility that would provide us with a larger space for our students to eat lunch, a much bigger cafeteria would allow us to get down into three lunches, have more students eating lunch at one time and have students eating at a more appropriate time throughout the course of the day. As you can see on the right side, you can see the overcrowded high school cafeteria. Definitely is one of the challenges that we're having at the high school. A constrained fine arts theater as we try to service our kids and use for fine arts program. Parking is a challenge, not just at the high school, at the elementary school level, middle school. If any of you go to Prairie Knowles, you know how we're snaking you around the backside. Country Trails, we made adjustments to the traffic patterns. Last year, it still is a challenge. Harvey Thomas, you can see on the upper-left corner there. That's Harvey Thomas waiting to actually load and unload kids in the morning for pickup and drop-off. And we have the same challenges everywhere. So because of the size of our elementary buildings, they were not constructed or anticipated with an infrastructure to manage the elementary buildings that are currently sitting in the high 600s and low 700s. And therefore, it definitely is underscoring some of the challenges we're having in terms of our traffic patterns. Surveys and focus groups. Our communities come together and they've collaborated to give us the best solution for our growth challenges. In these conversations, the surveys, focus groups, all of those elements, we came up with four primary things that our community members really asked for. They really wanted to remain a one-high school district and they really wanted our middle school students to be able to learn and grow together. When we met as a focus group, one of the challenges was they did not like that our students were sixth and seventh grade, then shifted eighth grade, then shifted into ninth grade. Their preference was, was there any way for us to be able to get our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders together and be able to provide a better program for them so that there's some continuity? As well as was there a way for us to maintain a one-high school district in lieu of going to two smaller high schools? The community also felt it was really important to maintain a community feel in our grade schools. As I just mentioned in the previous slide, part of our challenge is that we have... Elementary buildings are very big. One of our elementary buildings is over 700. One of our other ones is getting close to that or in the high 600s, as well as our third one. The only one that's smaller than that is Lily Lake. When we looked at comparatives across the state of Illinois and even in our region, many of the districts that neighbor us, their schools are sitting in the 400 to 450 student range, which is really a much more appropriate level for our students to be able to feel that sense of belonging, that connectivity to their school community, to make connections with their administration, with the related service personnel, with their teaching staff. It's much easier to manage that number of students. Not that we don't do a great job because I think we do already, but it does provide the opportunity to have a much more of a community feel for our grade school students if we get those numbers down. And they want us to prioritize the well-being of students and staff and enhance academic programming throughout the district. Another challenge with our current infrastructure is when you have a sixth, seventh center and then you have an eighth-grade center, it's challenging to be able to have really strong academic programming, primarily because, as you can imagine, a building of 400 kids, sometimes you can't run a full teacher with all of the career tech ed options or all the exploratory options. And so we're forced to share staff amongst the districts. So we're sharing staff between high school to Central Middle School. And in some cases, we're going across the elementary school to the elementary school for fine arts because we don't have this number of sections that would require to have one full-time teacher. If you can pull all sixth through eighth-grade students together, you now have a need for more staff. And you pull all the staff together and you can run a much better, stronger program because you would have the opportunity to hire a full-time teacher, which is a much more desirable job for those staff members. And then lastly, they want us to achieve all these improvements at the lowest possible cost to taxpayers. And when we talk about the lowest possible tax, we're talking about that over time. So how do we provide the best infrastructure we can do for our district for the longest amount of time that's going to take it out the furthest for our taxpayers so we don't have to keep coming back to them and band-aiding a different solution so that we're having to ask for additional dollars as we continue to move forward? So as we looked at these and we talked through our focus group and gave their opportunities last year to give us feedback, that's how we came up with those four different plans. The four plans that were discussed last year in the focus groups you can see are here. On solution A, which is the one that we're actually moving forward with at this time, is $195 million with a new high school for 2,400 students with a capacity level of 300. So all of our large spaces, for the most part, would accommodate for the 3,000 students. That would be the cafeteria area, some of the physical education spaces, the fine arts center to make sure we don't have to expand upon those at a later date. But it would still have room to do additions on it for 3,000 student classrooms at that point. But for now, it would be for 2,400 students. PKMS, Prairie Knoll's Middle School, would become a fifth elementary school on the east side. That is where most of our dense population is. And so having another elementary school on that side helps us in terms of transportation, trying to get students to and from there and where most of our population is at. Move eighth grade or sixth grade to CMS. This is what was planned last year. As you can tell, it's already shifted a little bit. And take seventh and eighth grade to CHS. And the reason we had proposed this last year was it would provide us the opportunity to have the sports facilities at Prairie Knoll's Middle School for our seventh and eighth graders. Right now, our seventh and eighth graders are the ones that have athletic events. We currently bus our students from eighth grade to Prairie Knoll's for some events as it is. We have a football field there and a track. And so having our seventh and eighth grade students there would provide them the opportunity to at least have the sports program there. And then we would have put sixth grade to CMS. That since has shifted based on what came out of focus group. And that's why you saw us add the 20 classroom addition onto the high school that we're currently working on right now for $11 million. Solution B was the second option coming out of the focus group at $185.6 million. In that one, that was a new middle school with 950 student capacity, similar to what Prairie Knoll's Middle School would be with all of the additions added onto it. A new grade school with 700 student capacity. Again, that'd be similar to Country Trails with all of the additions added onto it as well. Putting in addition to CHS to include the 20 classroom addition that we're currently doing, plus adding on an auditorium, parking and cafeteria. That would have required us to do some things with some of the or some of the water retention areas and some of those types of things to be able to manage that. But we did have some plans that we could do that. CMS to become either an early childhood center or a ninth grade center. And the reason we gave those solutions was to try to get us out. At the bottom of these, you can see what these would extend out to if we were at 3% growth. If we're under 3% growth, we can go out further. If we grow faster than 3%, obviously it would be a little bit less than that. But these were projected timeframes to take us out based on the solutions that we had last year. Solution C was $119.9 million. This one was to put up a new grade school with 700 student capacity, similar to what I talked about in solution B. Addition to PKMS to include 12 classrooms and of course lockers. Currently, we have locker challenges at Prairie Knoll's Middle School. As we continue to grow, we're going to have to do something regarding the lockers if should the referendum not pass and we have to continue to use Prairie Knoll's as a middle school. That'll be something we'll have to make some adjustments to. And then, of course, the addition to CHS, which I've already talked about in solution B. Sixth grade to central middle school, which was similar to what we suggested in solution A, and seventh and eighth grade to PKMS, which we also suggested in solution A, along with the timeframe that you would get out if we were at 3%. If less than 3%, obviously it would go a little further and more than 3% it'd be a little bit less. And then we had solution D, which was 74 million, which was addition to central high school to include the 20 classroom addition we've already spoken about. And then also auditorium, parking and cafeteria with mobile units for 1,650 students. So trying to add on there just to make sure we can get out some additional mobile units to extend us out just a little bit further and to try to help us as we continue to look at that. Addition to PKMS to include 12 classrooms and lockers. Same thing I already talked about, CT, same thing I talked about. Put fifth and sixth grade to CMS. We could do that with mobile classrooms. We'd probably put six or seven mobile classrooms outside of central middle school to be able to put another grade level there, which would allow us some additional space to be able to do something and then move seventh and eighth grade to PKMS. That one was aborted and basically we moved forward with solution A. So the comprehensive plan that fixes all of this, you can see the plan as it is. The current high school would become home to sixth through eighth grade, placing all of them into one building. So we have a much better and stronger progression of learning. Prairie Knoll's Middle School transforms into a fifth elementary school, which would eliminate the need for any of the mobile units we currently have in existence. Central Middle School would remain operational as possible early childhood center. That one's still up in the air a little bit, but we definitely want to keep some type of program at central middle school to make sure that it can stay operational. The larger capacity high school, so one high school solution on the new site, which is located on Route 47 with the ability to accommodate up to 2,400 students in terms of classrooms. And then future elementary, middle schools down the road somewhere that could be placed also on Route 47 for the elementary and middle school as well as have some opportunity for commercial opportunities. Again, one comprehensive plan that fits all levels. One of the questions we keep getting is, well, how are you operationally redistributing the students? And how do we know where teachers are going and what's the cost of staff? So basically, in the operational redistribution plan, the grade school, Country Trails, Harvey Thomas, Lily Lake and PB, our four current grade schools, would be dispersed into five. And so you see them feeding into CT, HBT, Lily Lake, PK and PV. Lily Lake, of course, is still smaller. It can only house roughly 275 students. We would not want to open it at that level. That would put them at capacity. So we'd go around two to 225 and then disperse the other students into the other four buildings. The middle school, central middle school and PK would feed into the central high school facility, current central high school. And then the current central high school would feed into the new central high school. So that would be the redistribution of students, staff and resources from the educational standpoint, not the operational custodian. Oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. Sorry. This is the new location that currently we will be building the new facility on should the referendum pass. You can see basically where our current campus sits. It's a central high school, central middle school and HBT. If you're familiar with where central middle school is currently, this is the road that goes alongside the central middle school. Can you guys see my arrow there? Okay. Alongside central middle school, this is what's called Peace Road. There's a sharp curve there that goes out to Ellathorpe. And Ellathorpe dumps off on into Burlington Road. And so where Peace comes in, it drops in on the backside of the proposed site that we currently have right here on Route 47. And then you can see, of course, here's Illinois Route 47 and the positioning of the site currently for the new location. Many of you have already seen this. This is the very preliminary design of the new high school. Currently, we've added on here, we've gone from four levels to three levels. We've added on a knuckle down here with some additional classrooms, special education classrooms to extend additional classrooms. Obviously, fine arts center. This is a large cafeteria where our kids would enter. Right now, that's where we house our kids when they come off school buses large times in the morning or be prior to school starting. And so that would be the housing area for where our kids would be located. And this is the classroom wing. The nice thing about the construct of this building is you can see line of sight is very, very good for all of our students. It's really two cross-members here for line of sight for our students as they're maneuvering throughout the school. Preliminary designs of the new high school building. This is just very, very preliminary library. And this is the cafeteria that we talk about where they eat lunches. A much larger space also feeds directly out of the fine arts center. So when there's big events, people can come out in there for reception type area. So the $195 million plan is projected to help solve our growth challenges. Obviously, this is a long-term solution. As I mentioned before, currently, the district is expending or investing $11 million from our fund balance to try to lessen the impact on property taxes by putting up that 20 classroom addition at the high school that if you're driving by there right now, you see it going up. We are hopeful and on target for that to be able to open at the beginning of next school year to be able to absorb some of the students. We are bringing a larger ninth grade class in as we're graduating a smaller class of seniors this year. So one of the things we really try to do as a district and we're pretty proud of, we're consistently able to do this, or at least we have been, is we try to schedule our new bonds to take effect as current bonds are being paid off. And so being paid off in 2000 a big drop-off after being paid off. And so currently, your bond and interest tax rate right now is roughly 95 cents per hundred. It's going to about 88 cents per hundred and then up to almost 90 cents per hundred. And then it's taking a drop to roughly 18 cents. And that is with the payoff of Prairie Knoll's Middle School and Country Trails. We're trying to marry up that bond debt because you can imagine, just like when you buy a car, if you pay off your car, you don't have a car payment. And then you want to buy a new car, you have to find that money again back in your income. This is instead of dropping and losing that car payment, we're basically saying, can we put on a new addition or the new high school? And from 90 cents go to a dollar three or roughly a 13 cents per hundred increase for your bond and interest tax rates to be able to construct that new high school. And so that impact to taxpayers for a $400,000 home is about $170 a year increase for that. At this point, I'm going to just stop for a second and see if anybody wants to type a question. I do have Tammy Schamo here from PMA. In the event you might have specific questions about bond and interest. And so I thought I might turn it over to her if anybody has specific questions. Or Tammy, maybe if you want to give just a little bit of the history of questions that came out during our other in-person town halls.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that and provide a little more color on the debt structure with the proposed referendum. So the referendum authority, should the referendum be approved, the bonds would not be sold at once simply because it's a large dollar amount. The district can't possibly spend all of the money fast enough. And as a result, it would likely sell the bonds in three different series. One series in 2024, some more in '25 and the rest in 2026. And each bond issue would have a 25-year maturity. And we have incorporated current interest rates in the market plus about 0.6%. While we anticipate that the bond market rates will remain relatively stable over the next several months and for the next couple of years, we did want to build some conservatism into the rates in case we have an increase in market rates over the next couple of years. So the true interest cost between those three transactions is estimated with the 0.6% of conservatism is 4.75%. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, excuse me just a second, I wanted to just point out the assumptions on the tax base growth of the district. So as Dr. Monken explained, the debt has been structured so that the bond and interest tax rate, which is projected with the graph here going across the blue line at about a dollar three for the life of the bonds, that's predicated upon an assumption of growth in the district's tax base or its equalized assessed value for the life of all of the bonds. For the last five years, the district's annual growth in its tax base has been about 5.6%. For the last 10 years, it's been about 4.7%. For the life of the bond issue, the projected growth rate we've assumed is only 3%. So that's another way that the district has been more conservative about the growth in the tax base over time, not using assumptions that have been as high as what is experienced over the last decade.
Thank you, Tammy.
My pleasure.
So what can the referendum do? We believe the referendum can provide the opportunity to remain on one high school district, which we have heard from our community members is a very important piece for us to have, really remain that one district. It's the one place where our entire community comes together. Everybody graduates as a rocket and that was something that our community really wanted to have. It can reduce overcrowding and support the enrollment growth at all levels. So this is not about a new high school. This is about a comprehensive plan that could address the enrollment growth that we're seeing at the elementary, middle school and high school. It can improve the elementary school experience of providing a more intimate elementary school setting for stronger relationships and sense of community. Instead of having buildings that are roughly in the 700s, the high 600s, going to buildings that are more in the 4 to 450 range. It can reduce the overcrowding of parking during school events. As many of you who might be on here are elementary parents and you've gone to events, you know, we rotate through in different grade levels. It's definitely very difficult to park in those areas, difficult to maneuver in there. We have so many challenges for both pickup and drop-off for our students. So trying to reduce those kinds of elements and then eliminating the need for mobile units by reducing the operational expenses and inclement weather challenges that we have, but also providing the opportunity for our students to be able to be inside the building with the rest of their peers. It can improve the middle school experience by providing that opportunity to combine grade six or eight together. We know that we can provide stronger academic programming, better progressions of learning, better collaboration when our staff and our students can be together during those middle school times. It also decreases the amount of times that students have to switch between administrative groups, related service personnel, whether it be social work, psychologists, whatever support mechanisms they may need. So it provides that greater consistency for our students who need that kind of support. It improves our career tech ed programs, our fine arts programs. It definitely has a much improved physical education facilities for our middle school students, which allows for enhanced programming. Right now, we currently have many sections that have to be pushed at Prairie Knoll's Middle School. And I know they're kind of in different classrooms, performing some of the physical education. So having more PE stations definitely promotes a more productive and a better opportunity for our middle school students. And improves the high school experience by allowing students to have lunches that are typical, typical times and have opportunities for grab and go. Currently, having to eat lunch at quarter to 10 or even if we had to go at the end of the day, it's just way too late for those students. We keep hearing from our community members, they would like that we need lab space for, that we currently do not have, to really ensure that our students are ready for their college and career experiences wherever they choose to go, whether it's college career or the military. And then it also provides for carefully designed spaces for our fine arts programming. Currently, our choir and band share a room right now. It does provide us with two separate rooms. So band has their own room, choir has their own space. A design studio so that we can celebrate our great fine arts program we have in both our photography, our 2D and our 3D art. Theater design that supports both the performance and set design needs that we currently have. Currently, we are in the back of the stage and in a very small room and an auditorium for 1,500 guests so that we're prepared for the 3,000 students that we are actually constructing this for. We'll be able to provide the necessary athletic facilities to support the physical education classes, student athletes and community events. One of the things we hear is like, why a fill house? Well, I think what people kind of forgot about 2016 is the reason that we needed the fill house was about physical education space. As a parent, you're well aware that the mandatory requirement for physical education is that every student must take PE every day. And so when you have roughly 1,450 kids and they need to take physical education every day, you need a lot of PE sections and a lot of space for those students to be able to take that. Pre-fill house, we had one gym with two, which was actually two gyms inside the one space. So you had two courts that kids had to try to do their services with, as well as we had a mezzanine with some weights and a secondary mezzanine, which was very thinner and very narrow where they ran some. So many of our students were actually running in the hallways doing PE and athletics inside the school, the wellness, trying to manage that. The actual construct of having a fill house is less expensive than putting up multiple gyms. And so it does provide us with that physical education space that we need. The other piece is that if you look at that event usage by outside programs, those are the programs that we service inside our district. Many, many districts have their own park districts. Parts of our Elgin community have a park district in Elgin, parts don't. People in Burlington have a park district, although it's just the field in Burlington, not really a building that they can go to to work on weights and those types of things. Lily Lake does not have a park district. It is for our kids to be active, both and opportunities is important. In 2122, we had 748 events that used our facilities from outside programs. In 2223, that 748 went up about 100 additional events to 849. And as of March of this year, we're currently at 895 events that are using our spaces for outside programs. That includes any of our feeder groups. That could include Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Sometimes we have Rembrandts for art, but different outside groups who use both classrooms and our spaces across our district. And so the utilization of our spaces for our community is very high and we really appreciate that. And we want to make sure that we have that opportunity for our community members as we continue to move forward. So as I mentioned before, it's not just a new high school. The referendum is designed to alleviate enrollment challenges across the entire district by creating more spaces at all levels, both the elementary, middle school and high school. We really just are trying to find a comprehensive plan that can answer this for the community members and only have to come back to the well-limited times. We believe this plan is the perfect one to protecting our small-town family feel while rocking our students forward into the future. One of the questions we get is about how can you spend these dollars? What can you spend this money on? Can you use it for other things? Can you do it to add on a playground at Prairie Knoll's Middle School or to do infrastructure changes that we might need to do in some of the other buildings? And the answer is no. The ballot question's very specific. And if you look here, you can see it's laid out and talks specifically about what you are voting for. So it's to build and equip a new high school building, including construction of career tech ed labs, fine arts spaces, a college career center, special education classrooms, collaborative spaces, secured entryways, installation of emergency response systems therein. Build and equip an athletic stadium, a field house, athletic fields on the new high school site. Improve said site and issue bonds in the amount of the $195. That is what we are spending the $195 million on. Everything is about the site there that we had presented in a few slides back and the construction of the building, the site plan, all of the things that we would need to do to get it ready to be able to open. Obviously, this is our last meeting, a virtual important date. So today is it. After this, of course, is election day, which is Tuesday, March 19th. Polls open at 6:00 AM. I do believe today, early voting happened and the polls close at 7:00 PM. So at this time, you can learn more online by going to central301.net/referendum-2024. You can scan the QR code. And at this time, we'll take any questions that you might have and begin to try to answer them if you want to type those in the Q and A.
Esther, I'll go ahead and answer some of the questions here. There's a question as to where I can find, how do I calculate the cost of my own property tax? Where can I find that information at?
So on the referendum website, if you either scan that QR code that's up on the screen or type in central301.net/referendum-2024, you'll see a calculator for the referendum and you'll be able to plug in your own information. It'll tell you exactly what the cost for your house would be. If you're struggling with that and you can't get it, if you just shoot me an email, I'm more than happy to assist you offline tomorrow. But you should be able to find it there fairly easy. There's a calculator there that's already been posted and ready for you to go ahead and plug that in.
Okay, there are several requests to explain further EAV.
So can you read the question for me? I'm trying to get what they're asking.
Please explain EAV.
The EAV is your equalized assessed value of your home. And that EAV is basically based on, we don't really calculate your equalized assessed value. That comes from the county assessor. And so that would be on your tax bill. And Dana, can you expand upon that a little bit more for them?
Yeah, I think that question came up when you were talking about commercial property and about the commercial EAV and what does EAV stand for? So exactly what Dr. Monken just said, that it's your equalized assessed value. And it's kind of the assessments of the property. So when she was talking about commercial property and that we don't have a lot of commercial property is we don't have a lot of businesses in our district and our boundaries that create commercial dollars that can help offset the local property taxes.
Another question, what is the plan for the budget for the new high school? Will taxes be raised to the budget and run the high school once it's built?
So I've been trying to answer this question. I'm hoping I got the right answer this time of what you're looking for in terms of operational spending. So I did ask our, we have a consultant who is helping with the engineering of the HVAC, air conditioning, the mechanical type pieces, but also the operational costs, which would include our custodial cost, snow removal, some of those types of things. In calculating that, and I responded to one of the community members who asked that directly, I came up with about $1.4 million annually cost of that. No, that does not increase your taxes. So basically, when you take, we do a tax levy every year. And there's part of our budgeting process is this tax levy. We live in a tax capped district. And in our district in Kane County, it's tax capped county. And so we have, we can only go up to a 5% tax cap. And in that tax cap is what we basically levy for, kind of like when a person gets a raise in their salary from their businesses and then they get to put that into their extra dollars for their budget of their household. This is how we budget for additional costs for salaries, operational expenditures, you know, maintenance that needs to be done, capital projects, all of those types of things. So the process remains the same as it always has been. And we have to figure out how do we manage all that within our own budgets by working within the different fund balances we have. We do not anticipate, nor do we believe we will have to add anything extra to what we've already done and what we consistently do on an annual basis. That process will continue and that is how we operate inside of our district. inside of our district within our budget. So we do not anticipate that that dollar would have to expend or we'd have to ask for additional dollars. Some of the costs, I know one of the questions was, how much is it per, for the heating and air conditioning? I know there's a number out there, it's two and a half million. I cannot come up with that figure currently. According to the gentleman I spoke with, which is Imeg, which is the engineer we're using for our mechanicals. He's coming up with a $1.25 per square foot, which is roughly 522,500 for heating and area of that. When I looked at our current facilities and looked at our operation budget, I took a three-year trend. On that three-year trend, I came up with roughly $1.10 per square foot or roughly almost 285,000 annually. And then additional salaries for custodial staff is about 466,000. That includes an additional maintenance person, additional grounds person, custodial staff. That might be a little high, but I wanted to go a little high just to make sure I was covering everything. Benefits for employees, about 102,000, that would be for, you know, health insurance, life insurance, those types of things. Professional services, trash, snow removal, repairs, telephone, water, supplies, uniforms. Those are added in for roughly about another, almost $275,000 to come up with that $1.4 million.
Another question we have is, does the high school capacity reflect the addition?
The high school capacity in the slide presentation does not have the 20 classroom addition. Because remember that the challenge with the current high school isn't the classroom addition. That would allow us some extra space. It's still, we still have problems with parking. We still have problems with the cafeteria. We still have problems with the fine art center. So the classroom, although it gives us more classroom space, that was really constructed as a request from the focus group to try to get sixth through eighth grade there to allow us to put three grade levels there, which it does allow for that with the 20 classroom addition. But it does not allot for the space we need for lunches, fine arts and parking.
Another question, are we losing students as well?
We have not, our enrollment is not down. Sure, we have, we have students that come and go. But currently, we have not lost more students than we've gained.
Okay, when you say you've done a comprehensive plan, who did the plan?
Comprehensive plan was done by district office personnel in conjunction with the data that we have from the Illinois State School Report Card, which anybody can go see. It's on our webpage as well. It's required to be on our webpage. As well as anybody can go look at in the Illinois Interactive Report Card, as well as Forecast Five Analytics.
Have you considered the more money the school will be getting due to new houses being built?
Yeah, so Tammy, I don't know if you want to add in because that's part of that process you talked about when we did the bond debt. But yes, we, we tried to look at what is happening with our equalized assessed value, that EAV over time. And as that continues to grow, that's built into the projections of how we're trying to maintain the bond debt. But as, so I'm hoping that's answered your question, Tammy, out if you want to expand upon that a little bit?
Sure. So the assumption on how the debt would be structured over time and how the impact would sort of be, you know, broken down for the individual taxpayers, kind of what I was mentioning earlier. So we have assumed that the, the tax base or that equalized assessed value that we've talked about a couple of times tonight will grow at an annual rate of 3%, which is less than the average increase for the last five years and for the last decade. And that assumption is important because we are trying to have that level tax rate over time. So there is an assumption embedded within that 3%, although the district believes that that is conservative. There is an assumption embedded in there that there will be new houses, new development over the life of the bonds. And if I may, Dr. Mangan, I noticed there was another question related to that 3% annual growth assumption. What if it's, what if it's more or what if it's less? So maybe I'll just go ahead and tackle that one if that's okay.
That'd be great.
If the EAV growth rate is greater than 3% per year over time, then that, that tax rate impact will be less per year than that $170 figure that has been provided in the, in the presentation and as well as the calculation that's provided in the tax impact calculator on the website that Dr. Mangan described. So any annual growth rate above 3% means for individuals that the annual impact would be smaller than what we have estimated. Conversely, if the 3% growth assumption per year is, it comes in lower than the 3% assumption, then you may have a situation where in a particular year, the impact could be slightly higher. But I would add that the district is building into its plan. The expected plan would be that it would have a call feature on the bonds. Meaning in the municipal bond market world, much like it would be analogous to an individual that would refinance their mortgage on their house at some point, if interest rates are lower in the future, the district is going to put terms into its bonds that allow it to do the same thing. So that if interest rates are lower in the future than when the bonds are sold in '24 or '25 or '26, that it can lock in a lower interest rate and lower those payments. So that will be a measure that will also help the district stay within the tax rate estimated tax impact that has been described.
Thank you.
There's some questions regarding the 153 people involved in the focus group. Do you feel that was a good representation of the 301 community as a whole? How did you reach out to empty nesters?
So we recognized last year, at the end of last year, that we missed some of the empty nesters that came alive after the focus groups and when we went out to do our presentations across the district. And so we did do a survey at the end of the year. We came up with in the loop and try to do a much better job this year. In terms of the numbers, if you take all of our town hall meetings we've held this year, we have about as many people that came out to our focus group as who have come out to the town halls minus this one, who have come out to the town halls presently. So for us, that number for our district in terms of people who get involved, it's, it's a very good number for us. So we did feel that it was representative. We had a good cross-section of students, or I'm sorry, of community members with the exception of our empty nesters in that focus group when we went to that in a live, in-person presentation in 2022, fall of 2022.
There's a question, is there a way to increase our EAV dollars?
More houses, but that means more costs to students. It's really the county assessment. We don't, we don't adjust the EAV dollars. That is done by the county assessment and that's what your value of your home is based on. Obviously, the more homes we have, the more EAV we have. Obviously, we would like to see us promote more as commercial. Trying to work with, you know, Kane County or some of the other zoning boards to see if we can't get commercial property in our district. That is, of course, where we're going to get most of our increase in EAV. Dana or Tammy, is there anything I'm missing there?
I think you hit it pretty well. I, I would just reinforce that, that 3% annual growth assumption. It's, it's also assuming that there could be, whether it's new homes or there could be commercial EAV growth. You could get new businesses. Perhaps at some point down the road, there might be some industrial growth. So it's not just necessarily only new houses. There are other ways that the district's tax base and EAV can grow over time.
Thank you.
Did the Board of Education do an appraisal on the land they purchased off of 47 recently? If so, what was the appraisal amount on the land?
Well, if we can add a little bit more into that, what do you mean by, by recently? The, the, we, we did verify the appraisal cost to make sure that we were paying a fair market value for the value of the route 47. But not an official appraisal was done through verbal conversation with multiple agencies.
What would be our tax reduction in 2027 without this expense?
Tammy, can you address that?
Yep. So for the $400,000 market value home that we've talked about earlier, if the referendum is successful, it'd be about $170 increase in the first year. Conversely, if the referendum did not pass and the tax rate dropped as Dr. Mangan just derived earlier, it would be a reduction in that person's property tax bill of about $890.
What are plans for bus storage?
We don't really have any changes in plans for bus storage. I'm not sure if you could type in more relevant to your question. Currently, our buses are stored at different locations across our district, as well as on the main central campus. And so there is no additional shifting of that plan at this time.
Let me sit, let me check to see if there was a follow-up there. No. Is there any school that is currently built that is very similar to our district's current blueprints?
Not that I'm aware of. I would have to ask our architect at this point in time, Larson and Darby, but I am not familiar with any school building in the area that is consistent with what the plans currently look like for the proposal.
What are our revenue for those outside events?
We do not, we do not charge dollars for our feeder groups. So those outside events, I'm assuming you're talking about the number of events that I had shown on the the slide. Those events are our feeder groups. So those would be like our boys' basketball league, our girls' basketball league. Could be baseball, softball. There are feeder groups that feed into our organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, art clubs, those kinds of things. We generally do not charge for anybody who feeds into our district as most of them are already taxpayers. And we don't usually, we don't really, because we don't have the space, offer the setting to somebody who might pay at this point in time. We do have a system set up for that. But we do not have the space at this time to allot for some other organizations to utilize our facilities.
What is the target date for the new high school to open?
'26, '27 school year.
Where is the money going to come from to convert the other buildings into prep for needs?
From our operational budget. So the same budget that I spoke about in terms of, we currently set aside capital projects annually. And so we adjust our capital projects based on a 10-year life safety code that we have, as well as we look at other needs that we have across the district, whether that be roofing projects, pavement projects, air conditioning in different buildings, area conditioning in different locations. We make adjustments to those types of things as we have excess dollars or dollars that we can utilize for that. Sometimes what we use some of our Esther dollars for is some of those types of things. And so as we look at our capital projects, we would utilize that to help us do some of those projects to add on the playgrounds at, say, Prairie Hills Middle School, if it becomes an elementary school. Reroute or fitting some of the bathrooms to smaller toilets, not a large expenditures. None of those are huge expenditures that we do not believe we can manage within our own operating budget.
What will happen to students who are in the middle of an elementary or middle school career when the shift happens? Will they have an option to stay?
Well, middle school, should the referendum pass, all middle school students, sixth or eighth grade, will shift to the current high school. They would not have the option because there would be only one middle school and that would be housed at the current central high school. In terms of the, if, say, they're at Country Trowel's fourth grade student and they are going to be shifted to another building, no. The boundary shift that would occur, once a boundary shifts are established, those boundary shifts would occur, regardless of the age of those students. We would not make adjustments, generally speaking. We would not make adjustments to have students stay in a specific location. Because the entire family would move. It would not be just a grade level.
Has the district completed a demographic study of our growth? I understand that we've been growing at roughly 3%. Do we have confirmation that this is the continued expected growth rate for the district?
Well, this, this has come alive many times in the presentation. I think they're comparing us to St. Charles or Geneva, who are doing enrollment studies for an entirely different reason. St. Charles and Geneva, both are school districts who have lost a great deal of their population. They have too many buildings and they're trying to figure out where to lay them. At this point in time, we know we have over 1,000 students that have come in our doors since 2016. They're in our doors and our seats. We know where we're sitting enrollment-wise. We also know that we have subdivisions that have been approved. So we do not need to pay somebody to tell us that we have growth that we see annually. The enrollment study will come in once and should the referendum pass so that we can make the determination on how we would establish the demographics for redistribution of our schools, relevant to where we have the largest demographics.
What happens if ECC gets the 5% increase? How does this tax cap affect our taxes in District 301 schools? The District 301 school gets their tax dollars, it's a question.
If you look at your tax bill, you'll see that your tax bill is made up of a multitude of different agencies. Obviously, the largest portion of your tax bill, as everybody knows, the state of Illinois is in your, inside the schools. But as well, you have fire departments, library services, post-secondary institutions. Everybody's tax bill in the state of Illinois has all of those different agencies. So whatever those agencies are doing impacts their part of that tax bill. We are specifically only talking about Central District 301's bond and interest levy piece of your tax bill. We're not talking about the EAV. We're talking about that bond debt piece of your tax bill. And Tammy, I don't know if you can expand upon that more or Dana?
Either way, Dana, I didn't know if you wanted to take anything or, okay. Yes. So as, as Dr. Mangan said, so the, the, the tax rate that's dedicated to bonds for the district is embedded in the total tax rate of the district. So it's not separated out on the tax rate or the tax bill of the district that you get every year. The ability to issue bonds and have a change in the tax rate and the taxes that are payable to the district is outside of the tax cap, which has a limit every year by how much that can grow. But bonds, it is, it is accepted from that and the district can ask for a referendum amount and structure the payments and the resulting tax rate and impact, however, works for the district and its needs.
What is the clarification on the bids you went about getting for the construction of the new high school?
I'm not sure of the question. Can you read that again?
Let me pull it back up.
The clarification?
Yes. What is the clarification on the bids you went about getting for the construction of the new school?
Of the current high school or the new high school? We don't have bids out yet for the new high school because we have not passed the referendum. Unfortunately, whoever asked that question, if you could please, you know, shoot me another question, I'm, I'm not quite sure what you're asking there. I'm sorry.
What is going to happen when the projected building of new neighborhoods doesn't happen and we end up with a bunch of low-capacity buildings?
Well, I would not consider 400 students per elementary building being low-capacity. And if we just rotated them right now, that's where we'd be at. Having a high school currently at a capacity of roughly 1,200 kids entering in as alum, as middle school for three grade levels is not at low-capacity either. I think this, this I think this, this plan is about getting us out to having a forward-thinking mindset to be prepared for the growth that's coming towards Central 301. We know we have approved subdivisions. You're right. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you when they're going to come. I can't tell you when the houses are going to be built. I can't tell you, you know, what the date is. I can only tell you that we have infrastructure that has been approved. We know there are subdivisions that have been approved that are moving out to the western side. We also know that we currently have brought in over 1,000 kids since 2016. We know that where our schools are currently sitting, and we are trying to alleviate the stressors for our students, our staff, our community, to make sure that we can give the best educational opportunity that we can for our students. I know one of the questions out there is why not just a new elementary school? A new elementary school only fixes one piece of it. When we went to the community members with the options in the focus group, we gave the opportunity for a multitude of different solutions. Some were Band-Aids, some were let's do an elementary, let's do a middle school, keep adding on. And ultimately, the conversation at the focus groups was, why are we going to keep putting money in every so often? Why not just do something that takes us out the longest and gets a solution for every single level? And that is the reason that the focus groups have determined that they would like to see a new school built, because it's a comprehensive plan that actually fits the needs of all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, and takes us into the future as the district grows, so that we are not constantly coming back into the coffers of our community. One of the advantages is that we're, if, if we are less than 3%, great news. It just means you get out closer to that 25 years we're expending. If we're more than 3%, it's less than the 25 years or whatever you need to get to. It, it just gives us, buys us more time. Less growth helps us pay off the bond debt. As a community member, that's a good thing. And so as we look at kind of where things are heading, coming out of Elgin and into our, our district, we know that we have seen consistently 3% growth, not 10 decade, not 10 years, not 20 years, but the last 70 years. Central 301 has seen consistently 3% increased growth, year over year over year. And so we know that people are coming western portion of Elgin, and that is into our district. And so it's trying to make sure that we're setting ourselves up the best that we can so that we don't have to keep coming back to our taxpayers over and over again. Elementary, then a middle school, then a change to the high school. The high school challenge, even with the 20-class addition, somebody said, well, why are you ignoring the 20-class addition? I'm not. The issue isn't just the classrooms. The issue is career tech, education, and lab space. The issue is the cafeteria space and having kids eat at times that aren't typical for our high school kids. Issues that we don't have space for our fine arts center in order to grow our programs for theater. The, the issue, though, those are the issues that we're facing in addition to the classroom challenges that we're facing at the high school. It's really about what does it, that we want to provide for our students as we are looking in the best interest of all of our students and providing them the programming that you would like to see as a community for our students.
Construction costs on new projects frequently exceed budgets, often by 20% to 30% or more. How is this being mitigated?
We hired Shells McNutt, who is our construction management company. We have been with them. They are the ones that constructed both Country Trowels and Prairie Hills Middle School. They're also helping in the construction of the 20-class addition at the high school. Their proven record with us has been that they tend to come in very well within budget. They do a good job of budgeting the dollars and maintaining and making sure that we stay well within our budget. Consistently, we're doing conversations, working as a team to try to look at the cost to ensure that we stay within the budgetary requirements. We have $195 million. They know that's what we have. Get this constructed, and it's staying within that budgetary dollar, not unlike we do with our home, where we're building, is trying to stay within the confines of what we can afford and make sure that we can do what we've promised to our community and that we can get that done in a way that we've promised and that we've guaranteed our community members.
How much does the district spend per student per year to educate them?
Well, the, the student spending is somewhere around, Dana, do you remember numbers, $13,000 for something, I think? Is that correct?
I, I think you're close. I'd have to look it up to be exact. It's in our.
Yeah, so you can see that. Go, go ahead.
It's, it's included in our audit, so I can, I can look that up real quick for us.
It's somewhere around $13,000 for something per student spending in terms of the way the state board calculates that. And so we are by far just the responsible districts in, in Kane County. And again, you can see that on the Illinois School Report Card, which you can access either through the webpage, or you can go look at yourself underneath the Illinois Interactive Report Card.
Someone is asking, how do I get on the list for In the Loop?
On the website, we have a link, but if you want to just shoot me an email or Matt Rodewald, M-A-T-T dot R-O-D-E-W-A-L-D at central301.net, we will add you to that. On the website, there is a link there. I don't recall exactly where you go to get there, so it might just be easier to email me, and we can throw you on that to make sure that you get In the Loop newsletters.
If the referendum passes, will the district bring more special education programs in district or continue to outplay students to Mid Valley?
It is our hope always to try to bring as many students into our district as we can that we service and that our, our students within our district. The challenge with Mid Valley and those students is sometimes the needs for those students are much greater than the programs that we offer internally. The advantage to us being part of the Mid Valley Cooperative, for anybody listening out there, that is a cooperative that we have joined with four other districts, there's a total of five of us, where we actually work together with staffing from the Mid Valley program, who staff specific students who have severe and special needs to assist us in educating those students to make sure that we can meet their, their growing needs. In many of those programs, we're trying to bring them back if there are students in-house, if at all possible. Otherwise, if the programming needs are so severe that we are not able to meet those needs or are different than what maybe we have for support services, we do work with the cooperative to provide those services to those students, to ensure that we can, we can aid them as best a ways as we can.
What has the district done differently in planning to build on Route 47 site versus the Rorrison property site?
Well, you guys are like asking me questions that I wish I was better at answering. Obviously, I'm not an engineer. We're working with Ericsson Engineering Company, who is a well-known engineering company that works a great deal with site planning. And so they are doing a lot of the work and the due diligence that we had to do prior to purchasing the property on Route 47. Obviously, Route 47, we are working with the, the design of how the rolling hills that are built there to try to have it help us with some of the retention plans versus the floodplain areas that we had at Rorrison Road that we had to work around or could not even work within, hence the reason we would have had to go with the, trying to get Army Corps of Engineers, Kane County, trying to work with us to make some adjustments there. So it's really the engineering company that's doing most of that work for us and leading the charge in terms of the best way to utilize that site versus the Rorrison site.
What does the traffic impact look like with respect to Route 47, Peace and Althrop? Does the funding cover any road construction required?
So the funding, if you recall, on the site, the referendum, it does talk about said site. So part of that is obviously putting roads inside the infrastructure. We have parking, we have to put in roads, we have to put in all of that. That is part of some of that referendum dollars that we have there. Again, the traffic study has been done, but I have not seen the study report yet. It's still being worked on. They have done the counts, done what they need to do to send it down to state. We're doing very early preliminary stuff to make sure that we're prepared for that. That again is being done by Ericsson Engineering to ensure we have that, as well as the studies in terms of what we need for our football games and parking for athletic events, fine arts centers, the size of the infrastructure, the site plan, if you will, for what we need at that location.
What are the plans if the referendum does not pass?
Well, if the referendum does not pass, then we will come back to the drawing board to continue to look at different options. Now, whether that means that we go back out in November again to try, that would be something that we'll discuss as a Board of Education to make that determination, or if it looks at, you know, how do we purchase new mobile units to put in some of the other locations? And so we'll, at once March 20th comes, we'll have a better indication exactly how we want to move forward as we continue to, to look at for the referendum again, or we go and do another focus group and, and come up with a secondary plan.
Is the center of the building open space? My concern, my concern is congestion in that area of the building during passing periods depending on the design.
Can you read that again?
Oh, yeah. Hold on just a second. Is the center of the building open space? My concern is congestion in that area of the building during passing periods depending on the design.
So the design of the building is fairly wide, and you can see from the construct of it, this space here is much wider. It doesn't look wide here, but that's very wide for congestion purposes. It also feeds through here. You can see kind of those little pass-throughs. Those are all pass-throughs to go into the cafeterium so that there's some flow there. So it's very, very wide, especially compared to where we're currently at. And so we do not, we believe it definitely can handle the, the flow of students. And it's, it's three floors, so not all students are located at that one spot at one time.
What, what will happen if the construction costs come in over the $195 million? Will you be coming back out to us for more funding?
No. The $195 million was what we were given by our construction management company, and that is what we will be holding them firm to. We have already, that's one of the reasons we dropped from fourth levels to three levels, trying to stay within the $195 million. We are, will be staying within that budgetary dollar to complete this, this build.
I'm just scrolling through some here. Hold on just a second. I think we've, we've wrapped up the questions here at this time, Esther.
Okay. Well, thank you guys so much for checking in. We greatly appreciate that. If you have any questions, we missed something, please let us know. Otherwise, thank you so much for checking in, and we will talk to you later. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.